This candidate for the school board for the public schools of the Terry Towns. And what a beautiful auditorium you have. I'm so impressed. My name is Susan Maggiato. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of the River Towns. We're so pleased to be partnering tonight with your PTA. And I would like to thank them, and especially the president, Liza Price, for all their assistance in putting this together for all of you. Our moderator tonight is John Hessel. And in keeping with league policy, he's not a voter in the district. He's a resident of New Rochelle and the vice president of the New Rochelle League of Women Voters. We're very pleased to have him with us tonight. Our timekeeper is one of your own, Ruby Kizer, a Sleepy Hollow high school senior and a member of our River Towns League. Ruby is going to say a few words tonight.
Since 1920, the League of Women Voters has been a nonpartisan grassroots organization working to protect and expand voting rights and ensure that everyone is represented in our democracy. We empower voters and defend democracy through advocacy, education, and litigation at the local, state, and national levels. The League does not support or oppose candidates or political parties. The League is fully committed to ensure compliance in principle and in practice with the national organization's diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. Membership is open to everyone 16 years of age or older. I joined the League of Women Voters last year when I had the pleasure of being invited to participate in the Students Inside Albany program. Being there truly inspired me to gain a deeper interest and understanding of government. As I met state senators that make policies that directly affect our lives, I was able to understand what political work I could do as a citizen to positively affect others. It has been my greatest pleasure to remain involved with the League and to learn more about how much change can be created on a local level, right here. Throughout this year, from the League and other organizations that I've worked with, I've realized how truly important a strong education can be in creating informed and active citizens of the community. Which is why what is happening here tonight, being able to directly interact with the leaders who may deeply influence the young minds of our community is so important to our democracy. I strongly encourage our candidates and the audience tonight to be aware and inspired by how much power they have to impact our leaders of the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ruby. Just a word about our recording policy that all the candidates have agreed to. Only the entities authorized by the League may record or livestream this forum. Only licensed media, which includes TV, radio, and newspapers, are entitled by FCC regulations to air portions of the recording. Anyone else who does so must do it in its entirety. This is to ensure that the content of the forum will not be manipulated in any way to create false or misleading impressions of any candidate. The forum will be recorded and available for later viewing on the League's YouTube channel, LWV River Towns. And we'll give the link to the PTA and the school district, so you'll easily be able to find it. There is no audience participation tonight. The questions candidates will be answering were submitted by members of the school district community. A committee of PTA and League members reviewed the questions. Our role was to organize them and combine questions on a similar subject to include as many as possible. And with that, I will turn the meeting over to our moderator, Mr. Hessel.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay, great. Okay, so we got six candidates here for three seats. We picked the order of the speaking by lot prior to the forum. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to make an opening statement, followed by the question period, and then one and a half minutes for a closing statement. Questions from the community were solicited by the League and the PTA event. Questions have been vetted by the League and the PTA members to ensure they are relevant and not repetitive or abusive. No questions from the audience. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer each question. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to respond. Each candidate has two 30-second rebuttals to be used during the questioning period. Rebutts cannot be used during the opening and closing statements unless granted by the moderator. Our timekeeper, Ruby, will hold up a warning sign when there are 30 seconds of time remaining and a stop sign when it is time to stop, and I'll let you finish your sentence. Campaign literature, buttons, banners are not permitted in the meeting room. No personal recording of any comment, permit it. Silence all your cell phones, please. I actually forgot to silence mine today. I'm waiting for a phone call, so if the phone call comes up, I'm sorry. No applause until the end of the forum, so we can hear all the candidates. We have a lot of candidates tonight. We have a lot of questions, so we want to keep the forum moving. After the forum, you may have time to meet and chat with your candidates if they choose this today. Okay, so it's going to be available on the River Towns YouTube channel and on the League of Women Voters River Towns website. And we are ready. We're going to start the first opening statement with Mr. Fletcher. No applause.
Is this on? Yeah, great. Love it. Thank you. Hi, my name is Alex Fletcher. I am a product of a public school education. And because of the excellent teachers that I had in my school up in Kingston, New York, I decided to become a public school teacher, where I have been serving for the last 23 years. I've taught in high schools, in middle schools. I've taught in rural districts, I've taught in urban districts, I've taught in suburban districts, I've taught in the United States, I've taught abroad. And when it was time to find my place to live, my wife and I chose Terry Town partially because of the schools. And now I'm also a public school parent with my son Elliot and JP and my daughter coming up. She's still too little. My entire life, I've been a fierce advocate for public education. And it has been my honor over the last six months to serve as a board member of the public schools of the Terry Towns. When the board position came open six months ago, I jumped at the chance to apply. I had always thought in the back of my mind that I wanted to be on a school board, following in my father's footsteps. He served for 10 years on the Kingston School District Board of Education before his passing in 2011. I've always seen my profession as one of public service. And I hope that if I'm elected again on May 20th, that I can spend the next three years serving the public some more. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Michael, you have a minute and 30 seconds. Oh, yeah, we have that Ms. Michael, a minute and 30 seconds. Started with you. You have the next thing, I think.
Hi, I'm Ida Michael. I'm a Spanish speaker. So I'm a pattern maker in the fashion design industry for over 20 years. And I believe that having a voice on the board for all families, and especially the Latino families, is important because representation matters.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lansman?
Hi, my name is North Lansman. I love being a teacher. Nothing makes me happier than watching a kid learn to multiply fractions, or learn how to figure out percentages, or compound interest, or learn what the Gettysburg Address is. And I want to get involved. What I know about is how kids learn, and I want to help kids learn at scale. The reason I'm running is I was listening to this podcast and book a long time ago, where this woman, Karen Chenoweth, was talking about how she visited districts around the country. And some districts, just like our districts with demographics and economics, just like ours, were getting amazing results, and 95% of kids are reading on grade level, and on grade level on math. And I saw that we were using this curriculum called Teachers College: Reading and Writing Curriculum, that evidence-based practices show did not work. And I'm running because I think that, I feel passionately that every student has the right to learn to read. Every student has the right to learn to multiply. And I feel that a lot of school districts, not just ours, say, "Well, oh, they can't, people can't learn. It's only about the parents." No, it should be about the schools. The schools should make it so that every student has the fundamental right to learn to read. This is why I'm spending every weekend knocking on people's doors. Why I'm spending all the time, because I just care about everyone learning. It's not about my kid, it's about everyone's kid.
Okay, you can actually turn that microphone off. The next one is for Ms. Wallwin. You have a minute and 30 seconds.
Hi, and thank you to the PTA and to the League of Women Voters for bringing us all together tonight. And thank you to all of you for coming out in this unpleasant weather and for being such engaged community members. I'm Amanda Wallwin, and I'm a current trustee on the Board of Education. I'm a professional policy advocate with over a decade of experience in government, and a mom to a toddler and a future horseman, class of 2041. I'm running for reelection because there's more to do. I'm so proud of what we've accomplished in my first term. We've hired a new superintendent. We've passed a bond measure in landslide vote to update our crumbling infrastructure. And we've moved to a community schools model to ensure that every kid has the services that they need to be able to learn. The work isn't done, though, and it's clear that our schools are not insulated from the broader chaos at the federal or even the state level. Just this year, we've seen efforts to dismantle the Federal Department of Education. Concerns about funding streams and historically late state budget that left school districts across the state stuck in a place of uncertainty for weeks. The students of our district need a fierce advocate more than ever before. And in the face of larger regressive forces, we have to ensure that every kid is getting a rigorous education in a safe space. Our kids deserve trustees who will stand up for them and fight for public education. And I promise to continue doing just that.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Santiyanis?
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. My name is Liz Santiyanis. I am a Sleepy Hollow resident and a parent to a second grader and a pre-K student. I'm also a deeply involved district volunteer. I serve on the PTA board. I lead the spirit wear program. I've worked on the mini grant committee. I serve as the second grade rep. I'm a pre-K class parent. I'm a member of the district's communication committee task force, and I work on the foundations auction team. I love this district. Professionally, I am a brand strategist. I have over 15 years of experience helping organizations communicate clearly and lead effectively. I'm running for the Board of Education because I believe families deserve more clarity, more transparency, and a stronger voice to help form the decisions that affect our children. From curriculum to transportation to schedules, we need systems that are equitable, data-informed, and responsive to the lived experience of our students, our staff, and our families. I don't come with a single-issue agenda. I come with a commitment to academic excellence, equity in both challenge and support, and stronger collaboration across all corners of our district. We need a school system that not only supports excellence and equity, but includes families at the table when big decisions are being made. Whether it's about instruction, or facilities, or the school day. I'm here to ask big questions, bring people together, and help turn ideas into action.
Thank you very much. Ms. Murphy O'Gorman?
Good evening. My name is Christina Murphy O'Gorman. I'm a parent of two students, a second grader and a middle schooler. I had interviewed for this position when it was open, when Ms. Taylor resigned from her position. And I promised them that I would be back in the spring, as I am. The reason why I'm running is that, not just for my children, but for every single child in the district. I feel they need to have a strong advocate, a strong voice, and anybody, for everybody to understand that these children need more than what they're getting. Throughout my career in the field of special education within the Terry Towns School District and also in the District of Elmsford, I've learned that we're creatively evolving education requirements. First and foremost, which I do have many other things to discuss, is ensuring the safety and the security is essential for our students and staff. It becomes more challenging, and I plan to focus more on the teacher recruitment, which I think was a little bit of a challenge this year, but we managed to fill the spots where needed.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, now we have our first question. And it's going to start with you, Ms. Michael. Are we ready? Why are you running for the school board? What skill set do you think makes you uniquely qualified to sit on the board?
I'm running for the school board because I am seeking to get reelected. I believe I bring creativity, passion, and I want to be able to create a culture of belonging in our schools. And I believe it's important to have someone that is advocating for the students, for their mental health, and for their academic achievements.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Lansman?
Can you repeat the question?
Here. Why are you running for the school board? What skill set do you think makes you uniquely qualified to sit on the board?
Well, I'm most interested in education at scale. So I have experienced reading curriculum, I've experienced math curriculum, I have experienced classrooms, I have experienced with systems. And I think if we have a system where we have high expectations, where we give the teachers the tools to succeed, and we have safe and orderly classrooms that maybe don't use just restorative justice and use programs that help teachers teach, we'd have much more safer classrooms, and we'd have classrooms with better outcomes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wallwin?
So professionally, I spent 10 years, almost 11 years, as chief of staff to a state assembly member, where I ran our legislative agenda for five years in Albany. And now sit on the policy committee of the Board of Education. I'm the only person on the board or running who has government experience or policy experience. So that's a lens that I bring. I also ran a very busy constituent services department. So I spent much of my time listening to our community members and hearing what their problems were with government, helping them navigate the really complicated bureaucracy that was honestly most difficult for folks who had the least resources. And that's also a perspective that I bring that I don't think anybody else up here has. I've worked with communities to make sure that their voices get heard and to make sure that we can solve their problems when possible. Sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's not. Sometimes there is a really big, larger problem in government. But I love government. I think it can do a lot of good for people. And that's why I'm running for reelection.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Santiyanis?
I have a background in strategic problem solving and communications. Key skill sets I think our district is currently lacking and needs. 70% of the sitting board has a background in government and education, and I think it's time that we have a different opinion at the table. I think that I bring that opinion. I'm also a deeply involved parent. I've been in the district for the last three years. My son is entering kindergarten. I'm going to be in the district for the next 13. I see this as a long-term investment for me and my family. I've been very involved in making sure that I hear voices from all across the district, not my own perspective that everybody is, whether it be at the high school or in any sort of community. One of the first things I did when I decided to run was reach out to a retired ELL teacher and make sure that all of my translations were accurate and also resonated with our community. I've been working with Diana Loa to make sure that every representative in Sleepy Hollow Village is aware of election and knows that they have an opportunity to vote. And looking at different ways to bring discord together, to have a valid conversation for everybody at the table.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Murphy O'Gorman?
I think, I don't have the background in government or anything like that, so I can say that. But I think there's a lot of, lacking a little integrity and ability. And I don't think a lot of people that are currently sitting on the board have an open mind to most of the things that are going on. And I think we need new perspectives. We need people that are going to listen at the end and not just respond to something. So I think they need integrity and courage and stand for what is right.
Okay, thank you very much. Here's the second question, and it's going to start with... Oh, that's right. I have one job. Go ahead.
Hi. So my father's funeral, I saw and met and shook hands with person after person after person who were impacted by the work that he did on the school board in Kingston. I said before, he was on the board for 10 years, he was the president for part of it, and I saw what an impact throughout an entire community that one person can have, one person who is willing to put themselves forward and serve their community with honor. I saw the power of that. He instilled those eyes in me during his life, and so that's why I'm running too. I want to make sure that I am leaving, passing on his legacy to my children and living that example the best I can. The skills that I have to bring to this job is I'm a teacher. A school board, a school's a big organization. And when you're looking at it from the top down, sitting in a boardroom, sometimes you can lose sight of what's actually happening in a room where there's a teacher talking to a kid. And so I think my perspective as a teacher brings insight into that whole, you know, every level of what can be, what needs to be done from a school board level down to a teacher level. And I bring that insight to my job at the school board. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, Mr. Lansman, you get the beginning of the next question for this one. Please name one of the district's biggest strengths and one of its biggest weaknesses.
Okay, so talking to, I've been knocking on people's doors for the last six months and talking to hundreds and hundreds of people. I think the BOSI's program and what we do with special education is fantastic. And the parents I've talked to who have children in those programs speak glowingly about it. I think the biggest weakness we have is results and achievement. Right now, White Plains and Osning and New Rochelle, your district, have higher reading and math numbers and science numbers than we do. And I think we, our students, have the right to learn as much as students in other districts do.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wallwin?
Yeah, actually, can I do a rebuttal first?
Sure, you have 30 seconds.
I think it's worth noting that the Terry Towns School District is not very comparable to White Plains, or New Rochelle, or Osning. And in fact, if you compare us to Elmsford, which is right next door, and while it is about half of our size, has a much more comparable, has a comparable population of people who are economically disadvantaged and English language learners, you'd see that we are not actually performing considerably worse. That's the rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. And we have another rebuttal. Mr. Lansman?
So if you break it down by demographics, economically disadvantaged, our students read at 18% levels and do math about the same. Whereas White Plains and New Rochelle, the same breakdown, economic disadvantage, have about 30%. So if you break down into subcategories, those schools are beating us in those subcategories. So, and also demographic, I pick White Plains because White Plains has very similar demographics to us, as does Osning.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Wallwin, Mr. Lansman, did you answer the next question yet? Okay, Ms. Wallwin. Biggest strengths and biggest weaknesses?
Our strength is our diversity. And, you know, you can see it looking out tonight. You can see it at our board meetings, and you can see it in every one of our buildings. We have diversity across, all across the spectrum. And it's what makes us strong. It's that we have teachers who came here from Grow Your Own programs and who loved it and came back and continue to teach here. We have teachers who have taught all over the world and have chosen to come to Terry Town and Sleepy Hollow and set up here. Our diversity is our strength, absolutely. And I will admit that I think one of our weaknesses, and particularly one of our weaknesses as a board, has been our communication. We've had a tough year with being able to be open and transparent with community members, I think. And it's something that I have been focusing on, and it's something that I think is really important. I think we need to find new avenues to make sure that we're hearing from everybody and that everybody feels heard. That hasn't been happening, and I know that. And that's something that we're making a real effort to make a change in over the next year.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Santiyanis?
I think our strength is our community. The sheer fact that there are six of us up here right now tells you a lot. There are people that care about our district. This is the first contested election in a very long time for a school board, which means there are people as part of this community that feel they have the skill sets that they can come help us do better. And that makes me very hopeful for our future. As a community, I think we all just want everyone to do better, not just our own children, but as all of us together as one district. In terms of weakness, I don't think that we are doing enough in the classroom to challenge and support enrichment for our students. In the three years that I've been in the district, I have seen those support systems disappear, not grow and build. My son is entering the third grade. I've been holding my breath, waiting for the challenge program, and now we are going to still be waiting. I'd like to see more opportunities for these children to receive those types of challenges in the classroom where they can succeed earlier on.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Murphy O'Gorman?
I think the strength for the district is definitely the diversity. Being a graduate of the school, I see that there's more diversity, and I'm glad to have my children in the district to have that opportunity. The weakness, I'm going to have to agree that the communication between the Board of Education and the community is a little bit lacking, and that's why I'm up here, because I would like to get a little bit more of that going forward.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fletcher?
I'm a, for people, I would also, diversity is our strength. You know, my wife and I chose this community because we didn't want our children to go to a school with a bunch of kids that look like them. We wanted them to experience what the world is actually like out there, where there are people with differences, both socio-economically and ethnically and religiously. And so we wanted them to have that experience. And I also think our weakness is that diversity. If you look, our community is 50 to 60% Latino. And if you look around this room right now, there are not 50 or 60% of Latino individuals in this room. And so the weakness that we have is in outreach. It is difficult to reach such a wide variety of constituents with equal amounts of attention at all times. And so the weakness as a board of the district is we're not reaching those communities that sometimes need our help the most, or at least need the information as much as anybody else. At a recent board meeting, Dr. Sanchez noted that at a recent meeting of the Latino community, many of the individuals didn't know that we were opening a new school up at Tappan Hill. And that's a problem. If a large part of our community doesn't know that large event, that's a weakness that we need to address.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Michael?
So the district's strengths, I believe, is the community school model. We have provided the Gentleman, the Screen Break Camp. There's just a screen break that was provided by United Way that provided breakfast, lunch, and snacks for the children. The after-school programs, such as leaps, that was at the WY and I also Middle School. school. I think that our district's weakness is providing supports for special education students, knowing how to scaffold problems that can come up, and how to treat it without it being something that's negative. Instead, work with the students and see what the problem is that may then maybe act out, or what they needed in order to get support academically.
Okay, thank you. So here we have our next question, and it's going to start with you, Ms. Wallen. What do you view as the role of the board versus the role of the superintendent?
So, the role of the board is oversight, it is governance, it is not management. I, there is no possible way that a volunteer board could manage the ins and outs of any school district every day. So, we choose the superintendent, we hire the superintendent, we perform evaluations on the superintendent, we work together with the superintendent. And I will say that in my time on the board, I have learned a lot about the ways to exercise soft power and the ways to build support for something over a course of time, and the ways in which to have conversations to move the district. And I think this board and the superintendent have been doing that back and forth since he's come on board. But certainly, it is not our place to be choosing curriculum, it is not our place to be directing instruction. We are volunteer community members who oversee the boards, who oversee the schools, and who oversee the superintendent's work. But there is no way to make a Board of Trustees model work if we are micromanaging that work.
Okay, thank you. Santianas.
So, to echo that, I think the Board of Education is in place to govern and oversee the superintendent. The superintendent's job are the ins and outs in the day-to-day, set curriculum, oversee the staff and the academics, and make sure that our kids are safe and being well-educated. I believe it's the board's opportunity to be a voice of the community, bring concerns to the table, address issues when things arise, as they often will, and to work collaboratively, to have, you know, discord, maybe some disagreements, but those are always constructive, not to divide and tear us apart, but really to lead us to better solutions together.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Murphy O'Gorman.
I believe that the board should be accountable for exactly what they're doing. I think they should be more communicative with the parents, and developing the policies for at least having a lot more accountability for the community. That's mine.
Okay. Mr. Fletcher.
I probably do that part sooner. Okay, I think the job of a school board is to be the voice of the community in providing a big-picture idea of what we want our school system to be. Public education is the only system that I know of that is run at the top by a group of people that are generally not within the field of what they're trying to run, right? And so, a job of a school board is not to make educational decisions on a micro level, but to look at the school system and say, what kind of schools do we want, right? What do we want the ethos of our school to be? What, how do we want the world to look when a kid goes from kindergarten up through 12th grade? What sort of feeling do we want them to leave our school system from? They obviously represent the parents, and they have to work hand-in-hand with the superintendent. I have taught in districts where the school board and the superintendent have an acrimonious relationship, and it leads to levels of chaos that are felt by the teachers, by administrators, and even by the kids. And if there's an adversarial relationship there, a lot less positive work gets done for the children of the district, and I think that's part of the role of the board as well. That's not to say they just rubber stamp whatever the superintendent wants, but it's to work collaboratively to ensure that the best interest of the students are being met.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Michael.
The role of the board member is policymaking, selecting the superintendent, approving the school calendar, staffing and appraisals, advocacy for students, school facilities, budget, communications with various constituents. The superintendent is a collaborator with us. He works on hearing our feedback and what we relay from the community as well in our meetings, and he communicates with us when there is important things that we need to address. And I believe that supporting the superintendent is a key component of being a board member and showing up at meetings that he goes out to, to, as a representative of our district to like the village, the Terrytown Village and Sleepy Hollow Village, or to the Candle on Hudson, just so that he could be able to keep them informed on what's going on in our district.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lansman.
Okay. When I started this process, I called Dr. Sanchez, and I was like, "Dr. Sanchez, what do you think a good board member does?" And he said, "I think a good board member is a critical friend." And that always stuck with me, because I thought it was wise. I think a board member has three other jobs. I think they have to listen to their constituents and advocate for the constituents. I think they need to ask the tough questions, ask questions, try to hold people accountable if they can. And I think they need to give people time. If you're looking, if you're for a football team and you have a coach, you got to see, give the coach time to execute his plans, give the coach time to win games or lose games, and see how the coach does. And I think giving people time is important.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we got the next question, it's going to start with you, Ms. Santianas. The Board of Education lacks a strong method of engaging the community in two-way communication. What solutions do you think would offer more opportunities for community members to engage in meaningful discussion with the board?
I think there are a lot of tactics we could employ to improve our two-way communication. You know, I've seen some starts from the district that I'm very hopeful for. You know, we have an upcoming facilities meeting, and a Google forum was distributed very early on to parents so that they could issue questions. And I'm hoping that that means that the district is going to use those questions to form the content of the meeting, so that they can direct the presentation to address concerns and issues and take a temperature read on what's happening in the district from the ground up. I think too often we go into decision-making blindly, in a vacuum, without data and without qualitative reasoning behind how this actually affects our students and our families in their day-to-day lives. Creating more open forums. I attended the parent forums for transportation and felt like they were too far behind in the process. I think the biggest thing is, no matter what the tactic is, it needs to happen earlier on, and it needs to happen consistently throughout the decision-making process and then after implementation.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Murphy O'Gorman.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. The Board of Education lacks a strong method of engaging the community in two-way communication. What solutions do you think would offer more opportunities for community members to engage in meaningful discussion with the board?
I would have to echo a little bit what Liz said here. I think just getting the process started a little bit early on and attending forums, everybody should be attending all these meetings and forums, and we should be getting enough notice before, you know, just, just giving us enough time. I think that that's what we should do.
Okay. Mr. Fletcher.
This has been a little bit of a frustration of mine since, you know, I've been on the board for six months. When I first got on the board, you know, I did the introductory stuff, I sat down with the school district's lawyer, and the board president, and the superintendent, and all the people, and I sort of was, it was laid out what a school board member's role is and what legal responsibilities they have to say, or mostly not say things, to the public. And a lot of that is legal protections for staff and all sorts of things. And so, my frustration with that was, I felt, we get emails, there's no, we get a lot of emails, right? And so, and that's great, and I want to hear them. The challenge was like, we're not then responding to the emails. And so, I advocated over time, you know, once I started getting my feet on, we started to advocate vocally for us to have some sort of, I thought, I called it like the school board hot topics, right? Whenever we were getting emails about, we were getting 15 emails about this thing, we have somewhere on the school district website where we're like, "Hey, you've been hearing from our constituents at the school bus stop, a question about this." And not giving any privileged information, but simply saying like, taking the hiring practices. We have robust hiring practices. A lot of people are emailing about the hiring practices. Why not just list our hiring practices on the websites as a general statement, and not in any one, not talk about any one specific event? And so, but the biggest issue I think here is trust. If the school, if the people in the community trust the school board, they'll get, sorry, they'll send the emails to us, they'll trust that you're taking them to the superintendent and getting the answers to them.
Thank you very much. Ms. Michael.
I'd just like to clarify that our board president answers all the emails, but two-way communication, I think, is key. Emails is a way that you can communicate with the board, but you know, you can also, if we're out in the area, you can also come up to us because we are representatives for the district. And so, you, the stakeholders and parents should feel able to approach us and speak to us about topics that you need to have tackled by us. I also believe that maybe that we should, well, actually, we are switching over from Remind to Parentsware, and so Parentsware is supposed to be a better way of communicating and have everything all in one, in one area, so that it's not so many apps that you have to have in order to be able to communicate with the school. It's all going to be in one simple app. And I also think that from there, you could be able to do text messages, and maybe you could be able to do that for the board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lansman.
Okay. Two things for me. One is just transparency. Share things like Panorama, like what the results you gather are to the parents and everyone. Two is just, I think as a school, in many schools, we have any issue, we listen to the loudest voices in the room. And I think we need to collect data from everyone, their feelings on, it's not just allow people, all the people to represent everyone in the community and reach, I think schools are doing a better job of this, but reach out to everyone and ask everyone, collect it in large, large scales. So it's not just a few people, so you get the sense of what the community as a whole feels, not just the loudest voices.
Okay, Ms. Wallen.
There we go. We're going to thank Alex for bringing up the board of AICU, it was a frustration that I had too, and in a moment of collaboration, Alex brought up the idea, and I ran with it, drafted it, and it's approved, and will be going up on the website soon. So that's a change that we're making. And in conversations that I've had with community members, I've also, I don't want to take credit for all of these, and none of them are, you know, groundbreaking, but we can also hold board office hours. We can take time for people to come and talk to us in a less formal setting when they have questions, when they just want to have a conversation about something that's happening. We can move our board meetings outside of the schools and hold them in the community, allowing people that don't usually feel comfortable coming to our board meetings to other locations. And we can hold town halls. These are all concrete ideas that I think are really important for us to dig in on and make sure that we're not just saying that we want to hear from everyone, that we're making a difference and we're changing our practices in order to make sure that people feel comfortable coming to us in whatever, in whatever format is most comfortable for them.
Okay, thank you. Here's our next question, and we're going to start with you, Ms. Murphy O'Gorman. How would you be more transparent with the community about the information going into decision-making, such as those surrounding our transportation challenges?
I would be a little bit more transparent. I, I kind of, I'm stuck on this thing with the transportation as it is. I think this worked before in the past, and I think that maybe there should be more looking into how it worked in the past. I know that there's a lot more kids in the district and different from when, you know, 2008, 2009, but I just, I feel that we should be more transparent, we should be reaching out to communities and past maybe teachers that have retired. This, this obviously worked at one point, and I feel that that's not being looked at throughout the district.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fletcher.
I'm going to say something controversial. I think it worked. I think the, what was supposed to happen, happened. The superintendent proposed an idea for how to proceed with school opening times and transportation. The Board of Education heard from the community, brought the concern to the superintendent, the community brought their concerns directly to the superintendent, superintendent heard those concerns, and came up with alternatives to the plans that were not liked by the community. And so while there is a lot of consternation building up, I do feel like the process worked. In this particular case, there are no perfect solutions, but I think the process proceeded as it should, right? We can't have transparency until there's a proposal, right? Once there's a proposal, and I think the board and the administration was completely open about that process once it was announced. And again, this comes back to what I very rushed, rushed to say, is trust. I think Dr. Sanchez is a new superintendent. I am a new school board member. So I think what needs to happen over the next couple of years is a trust-building exercise. If we are completely transparent, we say every single thing that we think we need to say before we, before it's even a question, then we'll be completely open and transparent, and we'll earn the trust of the community, so that it doesn't have to be every single little bit set up.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Ms. Michael.
So since I've been on the board, transparency is something we've been working on. We have communication with newsletters from every building that come out every Sunday at 5:00 p.m., and a communication newsletter from our superintendent on Tuesdays at 4:00 p.m. We have communications committees of willingness to improve when stakeholders had write to us and tell us that something isn't very well communicated, such as the people complaining that they couldn't find the board policy on community comments. So we hyperlink the link to the policy on our board agenda. And we also heard from the community saying that they couldn't, they didn't know that there was a board meeting, and so the superintendent linked the, hyperlinked the board meeting on our news, on his newsletter on Tuesdays. And I think that we are always willing to improve on our communication with the community, and we're willing to listen to what they have to make.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lansman.
I'm the second Alex here. I think it's all about building trust. But I don't think it's important to be transparent with the community. Like I have my horseman news here, which I get, which I love, but, you know, it's all good news, it's all how great we are, which is, which is great, but I think that if you're only hearing positive things all the time, sometimes the trust can fade a little bit. And I think- And I think being honest and transparent with the community is a good way to build trust.
Okay, um, Ms. Wallwood?
These orders are complicated for all of us. Um, listen, I think it's clear that we need a holistic solution to our transportation system. Uh, it goes beyond bus routes, it goes beyond start times. We, our schools don't exist in a vacuum. They exist in our villages, in our townships, in our county, in our state, even, in our country. Um, and almost all of those levels of government have something to say about where sidewalks go, where stop signs go, where stoplights go. And we need to get the bus routes right. We need to make sure that the bus stops are in the right places, and we need to have start times that make sense for all of our families, absolutely. But we also need to be fierce advocates for the broader community. And we need to make sure that it's safe to walk to school for our kids. That's something that is an absolute must. Our kids should be able to walk to school if they want to, or bike to school, or roller blade, or wear the shoes with the rolly heels, whatever it is that they want to do. Heelys, thank you. Um, you know, and we need to be part of that, and we need to be advocating for that, particularly as we open a new school that is very much not walkable. We need to make sure that that changes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Santianas?
Transportation is a tricky one. Um, if you're a parent, you've been having transportation issues since September. Uh, and you've been telling the district that there's been a problem with transportation since September. I was with a group of parents in Dr. Sanchez's office in January asking to republish the bus schedule because none of the buses were actually on the time that was on the original schedule. I think we're still waiting for that, that schedule to be published. Uh, the specific process around the new school start at times was messy. And I think that it should have involved parents earlier on in the process, as I said earlier. Uh, it should have involved all stakeholders, staff, families, the bus drivers who are doing this every single day. I'm not quite sure if our transportation consultant actually talked to any of the stakeholders because I don't understand where some of the times and proposals came from, which then led us into this cycle of having parent forums, publishing new options. I recently sent the board an example from another district of a twenty-six-page, data-filled document that was not proprietary and was public information that the district was able to share around why their bus schedules are the way they are. I would like to see that type of information shared with our district so that parents can understand the decision-making process and the trade-offs that are being made on behalf of our students.
Okay, thank you. So now we're back to the top. Mr. Fletcher? Are there areas in the proposed budget that you think are underfunded? And if so, why?
Um, everything. We should, our public school should be the gold standard for the world. We should be spending more money than anyone ever could on every student that we ever educate because they are the most important thing in our society, because they are all we have in our future. Now, the reality is, that's not going to happen, right? So we have to prioritize where we put money to in order to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our community. I always think my fallback position is, the more FaceTime a kid gets with a teacher, the better. Right? And so to me, that means smaller class sizes, uh, which requires bigger spaces and requires then more teachers to fill those spaces to meet the needs of those kids. That is also the most expensive thing that a school district can do, hire more teachers and build more buildings. Uh, so we need to find ways to effectively get more FaceTime between our kids and our educators. And that includes counselors, includes social workers, includes support staff. Um, so what I would, that's the thing that I would try to fund more if I could have weighed my imaginary pixie wand and just to make money out of nothing. We can't. So we need to be physically responsible and balance our, the needs of our district.
Thank you. Ms. Michael?
I believe that during budget talks, it's important to, um, look through all the information that's given to us prior to the meetings and, um, highlight ones that you think that would be needed for more advocacy. Uh, also, when, throughout the year, the, the buildings all make presentations, so then you can, um, you listen to what they have to say and see what you think that they would be able to, um, need and bring up during your budget talks. Advocacy, I think, is important for, for the, like, if you, we do a community, we do, um, visitation for all the schools, school buildings every, um, few months, or, sorry, all the buildings get visited, and it's within a few, like, three, four months. And we, I think from doing those walkthroughs, you could see and make notes on what needs to be facility-wise, um, worked on, and bring it up during budget talks as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lassman?
Okay, this is going to sound strange, coming from a candidate running against incumbents, but I love this budget. I love that they're including money for reading, and they're actually buying textbooks. That makes me deeply happy. They're increasing drivers to enhance transportation. They're, um, doing professional development for teachers, to train teachers on new programs. I think that's fantastic. And while, as, as a teacher, I'd like the teachers to get higher raises, I think that we're keeping taxes at a reasonable level, and this is a very reasonable budget. And I want to vote yes on this budget.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wallwood?
I promise that I will not talk all of your ears off on the problems with the state budget, state budget formula for public schools. Uh, we can do that outside if anybody wants to hear several, several hours on that. But what I will talk about in this budget, and in pretty much every public school budget, is that there should be more funding for arts. I grew up as a theater kid in a public school, and my high school did five plays a year without even thinking about it, and sometimes more, if one of us wanted to do another play and came up with an idea for it. I think we should do more theater. I think more kids should be playing instruments, and they should have easier, better access to instruments. I think that kids who want to be writing poetry ought to be publishing their poetry. And I think the kids who want to make some weird music ought to be doing that, and we ought to be publicizing it and giving them all of the tools that they need to do that. And I know that in the context of this budget, it's impossible to do all of that. But I think that we have the potential to really give our kids something that they're not getting right now, and that's something that I think we should keep thinking about.
Okay, excuse me. Um, Ms. Santianas?
The question was about what in the budget is underfunded? Is that correct?
Which areas of the proposed budget do you think are underfunded?
Yeah. Underfunded, I think, if you look at the total budget, about nineteen percent is classrooms, academics. Where schools, I think, a majority of the budget should be going towards the academics. Um, I think some of the budget needs to be right-sided to ensure that programs like Plus and Challenge and enrichment programs and the arts and all the things that we love about our own education backgrounds and what we remember as some of the best times in our school days are what is there for our children. Um, I want to see less administration, less overhead, less arguing back and forth over facilities updates, just make the schools as best as they can be.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Murphy, uh, Gorman?
This budget is definitely underfunded for academics. I have to agree. I'm going to echo everything that Liz just said. It's definitely, we need more in the classrooms. Um, it, I, I'm, I feel it as a parent in the district, and I think that the kids need more in the classrooms. Arts, music, they should be involved with more than just their phones.
Okay, thank you. Um, here's a next question, and we're going to start with you, Ms. Michael. Do you think students with IEPs and 504s are receiving a quality education in the appropriate services?
Um, I would believe yes. It also, I think it also depends on how much you're, you know how to advocate for your son or your daughter. Um, it's important to do your research because not only are you, um, in a room, you have the opportunity to be in the room to, to advocate for your child, you should be able to have the knowledge as well so that you could be able to defend why your, your child needs the, um, services that you, you're advocating for. It's important to, um, be able to not be talked out of being, having the services that are provided for you in the beginning. Um, and I believe that our school is, is, uh, is good at keeping it. It's just that you have to be able to advocate as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lassman?
Um, again, I don't have the full scope of spectrum. Just the parents that I've talked to, whose kids are receiving services and extremely happy and inspired by their teachers, and tell me stories about just how much teachers have done to make their kids' lives better. And I hear just a lot of really good things about these special education teachers in our schools, and they seem to be doing great work.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wallwood?
A very unsatisfying answer, which is sometimes. Um, certainly, there are plenty of families who are getting exactly what they need, and that's what we want to see for every family. But there are families who are not, and we hear from them, and it's something that we need to take seriously and work on absolutely within the district. But something we also need to really think about is how we can bring more of our students with IEPs and 504s back into our district. We have students who are going to other schools because we aren't able to service them, because we don't have the right equipment, because we don't have the right faculty, because we don't have the right staff, because we don't have the right space. Space, uh, facilities matter a lot when it comes to, uh, students with disabilities. And we need to be able to bring those students back. We need to be able to include them in our education program. We need to be able to give them the education that all of our students are getting. And to bring that back to the budget, that also is something that would give us more flexibility budget-wise and would be really, you know, I think, could bring the students with disabilities in our community back into our community.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Santianas?
I agree that some students, once they have an IEP or a 504, are getting the right services and the attention that they need. I've seen it happen in our classrooms, and I feel like they are doing a good job. What I have also seen is teachers are afraid to speak up and suggest to parents that they need to get their children tested and assessed. There is something happening where the staff feels like they can't be the conduit. They're with the children all day, every day, and they see them learning, and they see the challenges. But for some reason, it is still on the parents to be the advocate, to get involved, to step up. And unfortunately, not all students have parents that are able to do that, have the resources, the ability, and the time. I want to figure out a way to close that gap so that the staff that are with our students all day, every day are empowered to help those students get the services that they need. And I think, once we beef up those opportunities, we will see students return from out-of-district schools.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Murphy, uh, Gorman?
Um, I agree, I agree with Liz. I do believe some kids are getting what they need, and some kids are getting what they're not supposed to be getting. Um, I for one totally agree with the parent. The parents are advocating more. They're needing the school district reaching out to the parent and letting them know they see an issue with the child or of some sort. Um, I think there's also a, a big communication and transparency problem with the school psychologists and the parents. Um, I see a lot of, um, parents having to reach out multiple times, and kids aren't getting what they need until the end of the school year, and then no documentation is being transported up to the next school that they're in. I've seen a lot, I've spoke to community members that have, went through that, that they had a call, and when it shouldn't be their responsibility, they should be sending all that information up from school to school. If a child has an IEP, that's, that's a state document, that's being broken, that, that's being broken. And that needs to be, that does definitely need to be corrected in our district. I do agree. And we would be, and we would have more room and more space for children to come back from.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Fletcher?
With special education, IEPs, and 504s, I'm in those meetings a lot, uh, from the teacher side. And the thing that I find most frequent is that, like, once a parent has, once a kid has an established IEP and 504, it's a little easier, but I think parents don't know what their options are. You know, I think that is part of the struggle, is that people, regular old people who have their jobs to go about don't know the intricacies of the state-level rules on special education, what is available to their child, what is not available to their child, what are allowed to ask for, what should they look for. You know, it's complicated. Hashtag, it's complicated. Right? So I think educating our parents on the system from the earliest age will let them know what to look for and let them know what to ask for in those initial IEP and 504 meetings, um, to allow their children to get better access to the services they want. Once their service is there, I think we're doing a good job. There's an administrative realignment happening right now to ensure that from the upper levels, there's better oversight or more complete oversight over the special education department, IEP 504s. Um, so I think things are in works that are going to improve that process. But I think the biggest things we can work on is parent education of the process, because it is a challenge.
Okay, thank you. Okay, here's our next question, and it's going to start with you, Mr. Lassman? Excuse me. Spanish language instructions are high demand in our district. How do you see the district meeting that need differently from what we are doing now?
Well, I think it's all about what people, people were saying earlier, teacher retention and teacher attraction. And I think in addition to, you know, high salaries, having nice facilities, I think having classroom management that's supported by administration, having safe hallways, having disruption-free lessons will attract the best teachers and retain the best teachers. So many teachers quit after their first two or one or two years because of lack of support or because of student behavior. And these teachers could have been great student teachers, but they, they quit. And I think if we can support beginning baby teachers and help them turn into great teachers, then it's much easier for us to retain and recruit teachers.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wallwood?
One of the things that attracted my husband and I to this district was the dual-language program. Um, it's something that I think is not unique, but really special, and something that we've been growing, and something that I'm hopeful that my son will get to experience one day. And I think really demonstrates the way that we need to think about Spanish language instruction. Um, we certainly have a fairly high population of Ls, and we need to help make sure that those kids are learning English whenever they come into our district. If they're past the dual-language, uh, stage, or if their, if their families don't want to participate in that, then absolutely we need to make sure that we have the, enough teachers who are bilingual, who are able to do English, uh, teach our English language learners. But I think one of the things we've really been trying to double down on is the dual-language program, because we've seen that we have not enough space for all of the demand. So investing in that and making sure that we can push that to go on for as long as possible is a way to make sure that we're building one community.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Santianas?
I, I have to say that just the dual-language program and the pre-K program, the lottery systems are not equitable. Uh, they're not built with the greater community and its needs in mind. Um, we chose not to enter the lottery for dual-language for my son. It felt like too much to throw at him as a kindergartner, but we were encouraged by Plus. He speaks Spanish at home sometimes, my husband is fluent. Um, and we wanted him to get that experience, and to know, and it sounds amazing. And I'm very sad that in his third year of Spanish language, it disappeared. I think that if I was looking at a budget, funding Spanish language for two hundred students in a grade level seems a lot more equitable than forty students in a dual-language program. I feel like we need to look at the way that our curriculum is built to ensure that opportunities like that are available to everybody.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Murphy, uh, Gorman?
I have to echo Liz. Thank you. I think my son started off with FLESS and Morris when he came into the district last October, and he doesn't have it anymore. And I kind of feel like he's going to be going to Washington Irving, and then when he gets through there, he's going to be put into a language that he'd never even had. And I feel like the dual-language has that opportunity to be ahead of everybody. So I kind of, I agree. Maybe in the budget, we can kind of find somewhere where we can meet halfway. Dual-language gets, so we can get some teachers to teach these children, younger age, to learn the language, because that's what we need these days. You need that second language in these days.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fletcher?
Can you read the question, or start the question?
Sure. "Spanish language instruction is in high demand in our district. How do you see the district meeting that need differently from what we are doing now?"
Yeah, I mean, I think this question came from probably from parents that are frustrated that the FLESS program got cut over time. I don't know. I haven't been on the board long enough to know where it went. I agree I would advocate for it to come back. I also sort of was disappointed when I heard that one way. I would also try to advocate for expanding the dual-language program for all the students who want it. And there's, we have to recognize, something I was surprised by when it came to the Spanish language education is that some parents in the Latino community actively don't want Spanish education in schools. They want the schools to teach their children English. This is second-hand knowledge that I got from someone. They don't want English. They want the schools to teach their children English, and they're teaching them Spanish at home. And so we have to be aware that, I think, yeah, I'd like my kids to learn Spanish, but not every parent is going to want Spanish taught in school to meet their individual needs.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Michael?
So since I've been on the board, we've hired a multi-label language director, Ms. Trudy Ravina, and she took a deep dive into what improvements are needed in the dual-language program. And I feel like she's made a lot of improvements. She's the one who advocated for our Spanish-speaking students, because they are the ones that benefit the most. Being in a dual-language program, learning English and Spanish at the same time makes them speed up their English knowledge and while being still comfortable learning their Spanish language. And she also implemented the Art Corp bilingual literacy program, and that is helping students read better in their Spanish and English before the dual-language teachers had to translate for math programs. And this is making it better and more equitable for the teachers to not have to do all the work in translating math for the students. And she also advocated for a bilingual reading AIS teacher. And that's what is going to be going into the budget if it's passed for the 25th, 26th year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next question is going to start with you, Ms. Walwyn? "What is your position on school safety policies, including adding a school resource officer to the elementary school and ensuring that students have a safe route to school?"
There's a lot in that question. I think I have two important points I want to make. I think safety comes from our school communities. Safety comes from restorative practices, and we know that anybody who's been involved in a restorative circle knows that it is far more intense than simply getting a detention or a suspension, and that it's part of building community accountability. And building communities where the kids feel accountable to one another, and when they do harm, that they repair that harm, and that they're able to come back and come back to their community and have fixed what went wrong. And that our teachers, our staff, our faculty, and our administrators are able to support those processes and are able to help them figure out what went wrong. Sometimes it's a disagreement between some kids. Sometimes it might have something to do with a disability or something else. And being able to bring that kind of perspective, especially to our youngest learners, is really something that's very important, and we're getting to time. So I will say that I believe that can provide plenty of safety that a school resource officer simply can't do in our elementary schools. I think that's the most important way to ensure that our kids are safe from anything outside or inside.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Santiana?
There are layers to safety, so I'm not going to try to understand what exactly that question entailed. When I think about safety, different things come to mind, particularly bullying, physical safety. There was an incident as recent as last week with my son on the bus involving another student where my son's safety was compromised. An SRO isn't going to help in that situation. I think that's where we need to come together as a community and work on programs and resources and making sure that the social workers and the psychologists in the schools are equipped to handle those situations with dignity. I think there needs to be clear process when there are physical altercations and issues with students. The few instances I've had experiences with, there has not been a clear process. And it felt like the perpetrator was more protected than the victim in the situation. You know, when you talk about physical safety and the transportation issues, it goes back to making sure that there are opportunities for all of our children to get to school in a timely manner, in a safe manner. And that includes making sure that there is enough supervision on the buses and in the schools to ensure that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Murphy-Ogorman?
I also think that there's a lot with the safety, too. So I also think bullying is a big thing. I think there's no accountability for some of it at the point. For instance, I had a situation that also happened with my daughter, and I feel like there was no accountability for the interaction that happened with her in that situation. I feel like she was unsafe and she felt uncomfortable. And I feel like it was just kind of like when your qualities speak to me about it, it was just kind of thrown out. And there was no SRO involved. So it's kind of like, was she safe? Was she not safe? Did I have to worry about walking home? So I just think that that's a hard question to ask, and I just kind of feel like there's... I kind of feel, I don't know if this is kind of going off with Mantiset, but I kind of feel that would that SRO have been there? Had he been there, would that have happened or no? Or is it pointless to have him there? Like, that's what I'm saying. Like, any situation, it's bullying. For the transportation, I want to say that I do think, we do lack the drivers there, but I'm not sure we lack monitors. So I think they have a lot of safety on the bus. I would hope that there are enough monitors in the district to at least do that. My son's bus has a monitor. My daughter's a walker, so I'm not really sure if all the buses have monitors. So I don't want to say that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Fletcher?
There's a phrase I like, and it's, "Everything we do teaches." And when I'm sitting in a closet with 30 teenagers waiting for the lockdown drill to end in silence, I think a lot about what lesson are we teaching our children? What lesson does it teach our children when there is an armed police officer walking through their school? What lesson are we teaching our children when we're locking them in the closet five times a year? What lesson are we teaching our children when they walk through whatever security measures we choose for them to have every morning? Unfortunately, we also live in a world where there are people who walk into schools with guns and kill children. I hate to say it that dramatically, but that's what I think about when I'm sitting there, being like, wow, if somebody came in, okay, I have this, I teach chemistry. I have this big flask of acid here. I'll throw the acid in their face and spray the fire extinguisher in the round. Like, what do you do? Right? I'm in that position all the time, quietly thinking about it. And so I think that sets me a bad example. What are we teaching them by having this happen? Do we have good security on the outside of our buildings? Absolutely. But once we are inside that building, I think schools need to be their homes. They need to feel safe there. They need to know that that location is a place where they are comfortable, where they're happy, where they are safe. And just seeing a police officer with a gun walk around halls, I don't think sends that message. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Michael?
I believe that an SRO isn't really appropriate in the elementary schools, but we do have a security guard in every building who protects and identifies anybody that enters the building and asks them, what are they there for? We also, while I was on the board, we passed bus patrol. And bus patrol is a camera that goes on the arm of the stop sign on the school bus to capture the people who cross, who dismiss the stop sign and just keep going, and they will receive a ticket for it so that we can provide safety for our children crossing the street and for the parents who have already ensured that their child went up on the bus and then they cross the street to go to their house. So I believe that that is one thing that we've been working on for school safety, and there's other ones that we'd be in the process of doing if we thought of it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Liz?
Okay, I agree with Mr. Fletcher that SRO sends the wrong message. I've worked with schools that have metal detectors, clear backpacks. That doesn't send a good message for our kids. But I want to disagree with Ms. Walwyn about restorative justice. What restorative justice is, is if someone plays your kid, that your kid should have a meeting with the bully. If your kid gets hit with a kid, maybe you should have a meeting with the kid that did wrong to your kid. Adults should be in charge. Kids should learn from adults. Adults should help kids learn from their mistakes and walk them through it and deliver consequences to actions. If kids feel they can do bad things to other kids and all they have to have is a conversation, that's making schools more unsafe. The way for safety is like broken windows. Teachers crack down on the small stuff, and the big stuff doesn't need to happen. Teachers need to be vigilant, and they need to protect all of the kids in the school.
You have one rebuttal, Liz?
Thank you. That's a wild misunderstanding of what restorative practice is and restorative justice is. Restorative justice is a victim-centered process that allows people who've been harmed to work to determine what the process will look like for them to be able to restore their trust in the person who harmed them. And I assume that Mr. Lansman has never been involved in one of those conversations, because let me tell you, they are not easy conversations, and they are not quick conversations, and they require a lot from all sides. And in schools, they also require faculty, staff, and administrative intervention. So these are not way...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to closing statements. Does anybody else have a rebuttal? Okay, so we're going to go to closing statements now, so we can keep within our schedule. We're going to go with you, Mr. Fletcher, to start the closing statements, and we'll do them in the same order that we did here.
Minute and a half. Okay, thanks. So before we close here, I want everyone to think about the moment in school they had where they felt inspired or moved, or that their teacher or guidance counselor or lunch monitor who brought it in looked hungry and extra apple. I want you to look at, think about that moment. Maybe enjoy me saying the name of that person who had that impact on you. Ready, one, two, three. Mr. Bosad. We all have that person, right? We all have that moment in school, and that is what school is about. So my guiding principle and my guiding light when I'm sitting in the Board of Education meeting is that moment. The things we do in the Board of Education meetings and the administrative councils and all the big meetings with the people in the suits and all the just adults in a room, all of those meetings are about facilitating those moments for the teachers and the children. We have to be there to support that happening, because that's education. That is what drove me to get into education, and that's what Ms. Walwyn wants to care about, education of our children. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Michael?
I believe in being committed and continuing my work in a school district. I volunteer as much as I can every week at the community pantry and various other places. I believe in centering student voices and strengthening the community connections and championing hands-on, equitable learning opportunities for all students that go to our district.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Walwyn? Oh, sorry, Mr. Lansman?
Okay, I think Mr. Fletcher asked you a question, and I want to ask a rhetorical question. What is the point of our school? To me, the point of our school is that kids are safe and they learn. And every single thing we should do should focus on those two objectives. Anything involving raising the taxes that doesn't involve those two things, we don't need to do. We need to focus on those two core things: safety and learning.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Walwyn?
So once again, I want to thank John and the League of Women Voters, the PTA, and to all of you for being here. I think it's clear tonight that there are some real differences between us, and I appreciate you listening to us hash those out. I've accomplished a lot in my first term on the board, from passing a bond measure to update our schools for the years to come, expanding services for students and families to creating new avenues for communications. And as a policy specialist with over a decade's experience working directly in government, I understand the landscape we're working in, and I know how to get things done. As a trustee, I work to ensure that our schools are welcoming to every kid and every family. And as a committed supporter of public schools, I have stood up for our kids and families every chance I've had. And you've seen tonight that I'm a fierce fighter for what I believe in. I'm asking for your support so I can continue fighting for this community, for your family, and for our kids.
Thank you. Ms. Santiana?
Thank you. This election isn't about one issue. It's about how we lead as a district. Do we make decisions in a vacuum, or do we listen early and often? Do we build school systems that inspire, challenge, and support every student or just some? I believe in smart, student-centered systems, and I believe in holding space for nuance and transparency and building trust. I've been in classrooms and on committees, in buddy chat hearings, and in late-night email and chat threads with parents, just trying to make sense of it all. I show up, I ask hard questions with respect, and I work to turn ideas into actions. I want to be a part of a district that truly listens to families, that leads with care, that communicates clearly, that strengthens, not divides us. And if you believe in a school system that supports every learner and includes every voice and leads with integrity, I'd be honored to have your vote on May 20.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Murphy-Ogorman?
Thank you. I want to send my gratitude to the PTA and, of course, the League of the Women Voters of the Riverdowns. I also wanted just to extend, not looking for sympathy in anybody. I was going to back out of this race last week. My father passed away, and I still, I'm still here. I go because he wouldn't have wanted me to quit. So I want to make a voice for the school, for the children. I love this community. I have huge ties to the community. I've grown up here. I've worked in the districts for eight and a half years. I've been in the classrooms. I see what, you know, what may be lacking, what may be great, what may be good. If I get your vote on May 20, great. If I don't, that is also okay.
Okay, thank you very much. That's the end of our forum. Let me give our candidates their... It's not easy to put yourself up here in front of all the people and run for office, so we should really appreciate that. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of River Towns, the PTI, and PTI Action.
Before, for the school board, for the public schools of the Terry Towns. And what a beautiful auditorium you have. I'm so impressed. My name is Susan Maggiato. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of the River Towns. We're so pleased to be partnering tonight with your PTA. And I'd like to thank them and especially the president, Liza Price, for all their assistance in putting this together for all of you. Our moderator tonight is John Hessel. And in keeping with LEAK policy, he's not a voter in the district. He's a resident of New Rochelle and the vice president of the New Rochelle League of Women Voters. We're very pleased to have him with us tonight. Our timekeeper is one of your own, Ruby Kizer, a Sleepy Hollow High School senior and a member of our River Towns League. Ruby is going to say a few words tonight.
Since 1920, the League of Women Voters has been a nonpartisan grassroots organization working to protect and expand voting rights and ensure that everyone is represented in our democracy. We empower voters and defend democracy through advocacy, education, and litigation at the local, state, and national levels. The League does not support or oppose candidates or political parties. The League is fully committed to ensure compliance in principle and in practice with the national organization's diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. Membership is open to everyone 16 years of age or older. I joined the League of Women Voters last year when I had the pleasure of being invited to participate in the Students Inside Albany program. Being there truly inspired me to gain a deeper interest and understanding of government. As I met state senators and made, that make policies that directly affect our lives, I was able to understand what political work I could do as a citizen to positively affect others. It has been my greatest pleasure to remain involved with the League and to learn more about how much change can be created on a local level, right here. Throughout this year, from the League and other organizations that I've worked with, I've realized how truly important a strong education can be in creating informed and active citizens of the community. Which is why what is happening here tonight, being able to directly interact with the leaders who may deeply influence the young minds of our community is so important to our democracy. I strongly encourage our candidates and the audience tonight to be aware and inspired by how much power they have to impact our future, our leaders of the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ruby. All right, um, just a word about our recording policy that all the candidates have agreed to. Only the entities authorized by the League may record or livestream this forum. Only licensed media, which includes TV, radio, and newspapers, are entitled by FCC regulations to air portions of the recording. Anyone else who does so must do it in its entirety. This is to ensure that, um, the content of the forum will not be manipulated in any way to create false or misleading impressions of any candidate. The forum will be recorded and available for later viewing on the League's YouTube channel, LWV River Towns. And we'll give the link to the, um, PTA and the school district so you'll easily be able to find it. There is no audience participation tonight. The question, uh, candidates will be answering were submitted in advance by members of the school district community. A committee of PTA and LEAK members reviewed the questions. Our role was to organize them and combine questions on a similar subject to include as many as possible. And with that, I will turn the meeting over to our moderator, Mr. Hessel.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so we got six candidates here. For three seats. Uh, we picked the order of the, um, speaking by lot prior to the forum. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to make an opening statement, followed by, uh, the question period and then one and a half minutes for a closing statement. Questions from the community were solicited by the League and the PTA in advance. Questions have been vetted by the League and the PTA members to ensure they are relevant and not repetitive or abusive. No questions from the audience. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer each question. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to respond. Each candidate has two 30-second rebuttals to be used during the questioning period. Rubritals cannot be used during the opening and closing statements unless granted by the moderator. Our timekeeper, Ruby, will hold up a warning sign when there are 30 seconds of time remaining and a stop sign when it's time to stop. And I'll let you finish your sentence. Campaign literature buttons, banners are not permitted in the meeting room. No personal recording of any comment permitted. Silence all your cell phones, please. I actually forgot to silence mine today. I'm waiting for a phone call, so if the phone call comes up, I'm sorry. No applause until the end of the forum so we can hear all the candidates. We have a lot of candidates tonight. We have a lot of questions. So we want to keep the forum moving. After the forum, you may have time to meet and chat with your candidates if they choose to today. Okay, so it's gonna be available on the River Towns YouTube channel and on the League of Women Voters River Towns website. And we are ready. We're going to start the first opening statement with Mr. Fletcher. No applause.
Is this on? Yeah, great. Love it. Thank you. Hi, um, my name is Alex Fletcher. Um, I am the product of a public school education. Um, and because of the excellent teachers that I had in my school up in Kingston, New York, I decided to become a public school teacher where I have been serving for the last 23 years. I've taught in high schools, in middle schools. I've taught in rural districts. I've taught in urban districts. I've taught in suburban districts. I've taught in the United States. I've taught abroad. And, um, when it was time to find my place to live, my wife and I chose Terry Town because, partially because of the schools. And now I'm also a public school parent with my son Elliot and JP and my daughter coming up. She's still too little. Um, my entire life I've been a fierce advocate for public education. Um, and it has been my honor over the last six months to serve as a board member of the public schools of the Terry Towns. Um, when the board position came open six months ago, I like jumped at the chance to apply. I had always thought in the back of my mind that I wanted to be on a school board, following in my father's footsteps. He served for 10 years on the Kingston, uh, School District Board of Education before his passing in 2011. I've always seen my profession as one of public service. And I hope that if I'm elected again on May 20th, that I can spend the next three years serving the public some more. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Michael, you have a minute and 30 seconds. Uh, there, yeah, we have that Ms. Michael, a minute and 30. Started with you. You, uh, you have the next statement, I think.
Hi, I'm Ida Michael. I... I'm a Spanish speaker. And, um... So I'm a pattern maker, uh, in the fashion design, um, industry for over 20 years. And I, um, believe that having, uh, a voice on the board for all families and especially the Latino families is important because, um, representation matters.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Lansman?
Hi. Uh, my name, my name is Norv Lansman. Um, I love being a teacher. Nothing makes me happier than watching a kid learn to multiply fractions or learn how to figure out percentages or compound interest or learn what the Gettysburg Address is. And I want to get involved. What I know about is how kids learn and I want to help kids learn at scale. The reason I'm running is I was listening to this, this podcast and book a long time ago where this woman, Karen Genowitz, was talking about how she visited districts around the country. And some districts, just like our districts with demographics and economics, just like ours, were getting amazing results and 95% of kids are reading on grade level and on grade level in math. And I saw that we were using this curriculum called Teacher's College Reading and Writing Curriculum that evidence-based practices show did not work. And I'm running because I think that, I feel passionately that every student student has the right to learn to read. Every student has the right to learn to multiply. And I feel that a lot of school districts, it's not just ours, say, well, oh, they can't, people can't learn. It's only about the parents. No, it should be up to schools. The schools should make it so that every student has the fundamental right to learn to read. This is why I'm spending every weekend knocking on people's doors. Why I'm spending all the time because I just care about everyone learning. It's not about my kid, it's about everyone's kid.
Okay, you can actually turn that microphone off. Um, the next one is for, uh, Ms. Wallman. You have a minute and 30 seconds.
Hi, and thank you to the PTA and to the League of Women Voters for bringing us all together tonight. And thank you to all of you for coming out in this unpleasant weather and for being such engaged community members. I'm Amanda Wallman and I am a current trustee on the Board of Education. I'm a professional policy advocate with over a decade of experience in government and a mom to a toddler and a future horseman, class of 2041. I'm running for reelection because there's more to do. I'm so proud of what we've accomplished in my first term. We've hired a new superintendent. We've passed a bond measure in a landslide vote to update our crumbling infrastructure. And we've moved to a community schools model to ensure that every kid has the services that they need to be able to learn. The work isn't done though and it's clear that our schools are not insulated from the broader chaos at the federal or even the state level. Just this year, we've seen efforts to dismantle the Federal Department of Education. Concerns about funding streams and historically late state budget that left school districts across the state stuck in a place of uncertainty for weeks. The students of our district need a fierce advocate more than ever before. And in the face of larger regressive forces, we have to ensure that every kid is getting a rigorous education in a safe space. Our kids deserve trustees who will stand up for them and fight for public education. And I promise to continue doing just that.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Santianas?
Good evening. Uh, thank you everyone for being here tonight. My name is Liz Santianas. I am a Sleepy Hollow resident and a parent to a second grader and a pre-K student. I'm also a deeply involved district volunteer. I serve on the PTA board. I lead the Spiritware program. I've worked on the mini grant committee. I serve as the second grade rep. I'm a pre-K class parent. I'm a member of the district's communication committee task force and I work on the foundations auction team. I love this district. Um, professionally, I am a brand strategist. I have over 15 years of experience helping organizations communicate clearly and lead effectively. I'm running for the Board of Education because I believe families deserve more clarity, more transparency, and a stronger voice that affect, to help form the decisions that affect our children. From curriculum to transportation to schedules, we need systems that are equitable, data-informed, and responsive to the lived experience of our students, our staff, and our families. I don't come with a single-issue agenda. I come with a commitment to academic excellence, equity in both challenge and support, and stronger collaboration across all corners of our district. We need a school system that not only supports excellence and equity but includes families at the table when big decisions are being made. Whether it's about instruction or facilities or the school day, I'm here to ask big questions, bring people together, and help turn ideas into action.
Thank you very much. Ms. Murphy-Ogorman?
Good evening. My name is Christina Murphy-Ogorman. Uh, I'm a parent of two students, a second grader and a middle schooler. I have, um, interviewed for this position when it was open, when, uh, Ms. Taylor, uh, resigned from her position. And I promised them that I would be back in the spring, as I am. The reason why I'm running is that not just for my children, but for every single child in the district. I feel they need to have a strong advocate, a strong voice and anybody, for everybody to understand that these children need more than what they're getting. Um, throughout my career in the field of special education within the Terry Town School District and also in the District of Elmstead, I've learned that we're creatively, uh, evolving education requirements. First and foremost, which I do have many other things to discuss, is ensuring the safety and the security is essential for our students and staff. It becomes more challenging and I plan to focus more on the teacher recruitment, which I think was a little bit of a challenge this year, but we managed to fill the spots where needed.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, now we have our first question. And it's going to start with you, Ms. Michael. Okay? Are we ready? Why are you running for the school board? What skill set do you think makes you uniquely qualified to sit on the board?
So, I'm running? I'm running for the school board because, um, I am seeking to get reelected. I, um, believe I bring creativity, passion, and, um, I want to be able to create a culture of belonging in our schools. And I believe it's important to have someone that is advocating for the students, for their mental health, and for, um... For their, um, academic, um, achievements. And, uh...
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Lance?
Can you repeat the question?
Here. Why are you running for the school board? What skill set do you think makes you uniquely qualified to sit on the board?
Well, I'm most interested in education at scale. So I have experienced reading curriculum. I've experienced math curriculum. I have experienced classrooms. I experienced with systems. And I think if we have a system where we have high expectations, where we give the teachers the tools to succeed and we have safe and orderly classrooms that maybe don't use restorative justice and use programs that help teachers teach, we'd have much more safer classrooms and we'd have classrooms with better outcomes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wallman?
So professionally, I spent 10 years, almost 11 years, as chief of staff to a state assembly member where I ran our legislative agenda for five years in Albany. Um, and now sit on the policy committee of the Board of Education. I'm the only person on the board or running who has government experience or policy experience. So that's a lens that I bring. I also ran a very busy constituent services department. So I spent much of my time listening to our community members and hearing what their problems were with government, helping them navigate the really complicated bureaucracy that was honestly most difficult for folks who had the least resources. And that's also a perspective that I bring that I don't think anybody else up here has. I've worked with communities to make sure that their voices get heard and to make sure that we can solve their problems when possible. Sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's not. Sometimes there is a really big, larger problem in government. But I love government. I think it can do a lot of good for people and that's why I'm running for reelection.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Santianas?
I have a background in strategic problem solving and communications. Uh, key skill sets I think our district is currently lacking and needs. Uh, 17% of the sitting board has a background in government and education and I think it's time that we have a different opinion at the table. I think that I bring that opinion. Um, I'm also a deeply involved parent- I'm also a deeply involved parent. I've been in the district for the last three years. My son is entering kindergarten. I'm going to be in the district for the next 13. I see this as a long-term investment for me and my family. I've been very involved in making sure that I hear voices from all across the district, not my own perspective at everybody's, whether it be at the high school or in any sort of community. One of the first things I did when I decided to run was reach out to a retired ELL teacher and make sure that all of my translations were accurate and also resonated with our community. I've been working with Diana Loa to make sure that every representative in the Sleepy Hollow Village is aware of the election and knows